Guys, welcome to the I Love Seaville Show. My name is Jerry Miller. I hope the weekend treated you well. Thank you kindly for joining us. For the next hour, we're going to spend a great conversation and a great time with Kathy Galvin. A big fan of Kathy Galvin on this program. I believe this is her third rodeo on the I Love Seaville Show. One time in solo capacity, one time in a fantastic panel that we did on this program with Heather Hill and Peter Castellione. And now she is back with the spotlight solely on her. And I think she undoubtedly deserves it through just a fantastic, long-term tenured counselor here in Charlottesville. Before we welcome Kathy to the program, let's thank some of the folks that make the program possible. You are watching a show that spotlights the best of Charlottesville, Virginia. But what we are, from a day-to-day standpoint, to keep the lights on, to keep the mortgages paid, is we're an advertising agency. And one of our clients that we love working with, we've worked with them for, goodness, I'd say almost seven years now, is Interstate Pest and Service Companies. We manage all aspects of their brand. And this company started in 1969 here in Charlottesville with the first generation. His name was Mr. Robert Wells, Bobby. And Mr. Wells, in 1969, used his personal truck, some sweat equity, and a dream to start a company. And today Interstate has evolved and matured into a four-generation-strong family business, almost 100 employees, a Commonwealth-wide footprint, with offices in Richmond, the Shenandoah Valley, and the headquarters around the corner from Boto's Bagels on Harris. Interstate, thank you for being a part of our family. We also want to thank Dr. Wagner of Scott Wagner Chiropractic and Sports Medicine, who is proud advertising agency of record as well. Chiropractic care, sports medicine, physical therapy, Dr. Wagner is changing people's lives one patient at a time. I have the easy job, just have to be myself in front of this microphone and spotlight the city. That just means so much to me. I've been here for 19 years. Judah Wickhauer, our director, has the hard job. He has to keep me in line and keep the audio and the visual, you know, on track. And thank you, Judah, for that. If we could, Judah, go to the studio camera. And let's welcome Kathy Galvin to the show. First, good afternoon, Kathy, and thank you for joining us.
It's a pleasure. Always a pleasure to talk with you.
Same. I feel the same. I've been looking forward to this interview for, you know, three or four days now. How are things going? How's life?
Life is going well. I think we're all very grateful for the change in weather. It was wonderful to be able to do some yard work and go for a hike over the weekend. And I'm also looking forward to having the last four months of my time on council be as productive as I've always been, but also looking forward to the future.
Repeat that statistic again, of how many months you've served on council?
Well, eight years on council and then four years on school board. So that's 12 years, 12 months in a year. So that's 144 months of my life have been in elected office. So I think I can handle four more months.
I think you can handle four more months, too. You are tough. You are experienced. You are a winner. In retrospect, and you look back at your time as a public servant, what do you remember? What are you going to remember? What do you think the legacy is going to be?
I remember lots of conversations and times with the public, times with other councilors' staff, hashing out solutions to some gnarly problems. The first one that comes to mind is back in 2012, I brought up the whole idea of ending poverty through employment. And that gave rise to an amazing effort on the part of city staff called the Growing Opportunity Report. I was on the Piedmont Workforce Network Council at the time, and I saw that city residents weren't using the hydraulic road, one-stop shop like other county residents were. And so that report gave rise to some really hard facts and also gave good recommendations. So that's why we have a downtown job center. That's why we have something over 20 growing opportunity programs for city residents that have really made an impact on people's lives, many of whom, what they had was a GED or a high school diploma, but now they have a future. So a couple of them tied with the solar energy, for example, or green industries. So that's wedding a love of mine of sustainability with equity. And those are the kinds of things I remember when you can kind of get multiple birds with one stone. I think when you start seeing the Belmont Bridge getting built and when you start seeing the improvements on West Main Street, I know if I wasn't in the room, those projects wouldn't have happened. So that's gratifying.
Neil Williamson is watching right now. Hello, Neil. Thank you for joining us. You've got two reporters from the Daily Progress, one of the anchors from NBC 29 watching the show, Donna Casella. Thank you for joining us on the program. Thank you, Angelique Jenkins and John Dallas Campbell, Ray Jordan, Amanda Truplowski, a lot of people watching now. I think that's a testament to you. 2019 in council chambers. How do you characterize that?
It's fraught. And I think last meeting, which was August 19, we had hit a watershed moment, and it was related to the kind of outbursts that were hurled at councilors on August 5. And we all began to realize, at least myself with three other councilors, Bellamy, Hill, and Signer, that if we didn't speak up about kind of the verbal abuse, the violence verbally expressed in the chambers, then we would be complicit in it. And the, kudos to the Daily Progress reporter, Nolan Stout, who stayed to the bitter end and recorded the whole event so that I think more people saw how we had kind of spiraled down into an area that wasn't constructive. And we need to make sure that we're doing the people's business in city council. And that means we need to be a thoughtful deliberative body and not one subjected to abuse, threats, calling names, personal attacks, as we're trying to figure out the best course of action for the city of Charlottesville. And that was something we came to an agreement on. We're going to be working together to try, and working with the mayor, as the mayor also follows the rules. And we'll take it one step at a time.
I think it certainly crescendoed. Was it two meetings ago when someone screamed from the audience, "You guys are Hitler's best friends." And terrible, I felt so bad for you. I saw the pain in Heather's face first. And I've gotten a chance to get to know you and Heather better than your colleagues. And I think sometimes people that are in council chambers forget that you guys are just people.
Well, and I think there was an editorial written by the Daily Progress last week, which kind of had a lot of wisdom in it. And it suggested and made the point that if you allow, you know, certain actions to persist, it's one thing to have a cathartic moment. And I am well aware of the advantages that I have had because of my race. I also have, I come from an experience of poverty myself, so I have a well to draw upon to understand and relate. And when people come to us on the dais and they are clearly in pain and they are still in trauma from whatever happened to them, either August 12, 2017, or as a child, or in their current lives of intense poverty, racism, I humbly sit there and I listen. And it usually does then translate into some action on my behalf, on behalf of that individual from my end or that group. When those comments, though, go into personal attack and start making claims against our character, like saying we're Hitler's friends, that crosses a line which then says, no, I have dignity. You have dignity. Let's treat each other with respect. Inherently, we have dignity as human beings. And let's get to that common ground of pure, basic understanding. And that's what I am committed to. And it's discerning, when is it that someone's attacking your policy versus attacking your person? It's still a judgment call. I'm an elected official. I got to take the hits for policies that people don't agree with me on. But if I don't agree with you on a policy, that doesn't mean I disrespect you.
Right.
And that's been also an interesting dynamic, that somehow when you disagree with a counselor or you disagree with a person in the community, you're disrespecting them. That is not, if we can't have a reasoned argument about the pros and cons of a policy matter, then we're not doing our job. And I'm always coming from a place of respect for my colleagues. So that's where we are, and I think we're going to move forward. I really do. And I felt that kind of camaraderie at the back-to-school bash when I ran into Wes Bellamy and Heather Hill. And, you know, Pete Armetta took a picture of us and I was, I had my arms around, I wanted Heather's girls, and I said, "These are my children, too." And later on, I was talking to Wes's children, "They're my children, too. We are in this together." And that's, and I felt that. That was the beginning. That was the turning point. And it took the kids to help us see it.
Do you feel like that was, not a low point, but one of the toughest points? I mean, obviously, August 12, 2017. I mean, I can't imagine, being in your position on A-12 as one of the five leaders of our city. I can't imagine the mental anguish you were going through. You know, how do you characterize, I'm not even sure if this is a fair question, but like when someone is screaming verbal, "Hitler's best friend" to you? I mean, that is...
Well, it...
I felt for you. I felt my heart ached for you guys.
Well, thank you. Appreciate that.
I really did.
And you do want to get to the bottom of what would compel that person to say that at that time and that way.
And that person did apologize, right?
And that person did apologize. And I am going to be reaching out to that person as well. But the whole genesis of this argument, this altercation that took place on August 5 was an out-of-budget cycle request made at midnight from a member of the public who we had known nothing about and had seemingly had been following the Rules of Unity Days.
Right.
And we were following the Rules of Unity Days. So we were following our...
Your budget.
Budget. We were being fiscal stewards. And it devolved into this accusation that we were trying to destroy black culture when the mayor agreed with the other three councilors, myself, Signer, and Hill. But it turned into a very, very harsh, over-the-top accusation about our motives. And, long story short, we stuck to our guns and didn't indulge in the request. And it's not something that was posted on the agenda. We cannot do things behind closed doors at the 12 o'clock hour. And now, you know, we did find out that, I believe it's going to be through Obama Works, there's going to be, Wale is going to come, and it's going to be a community concert, and it's going to be free, and it's going to be in October. So there was some benefit that came out of it, but it was also, it was really important for us to maintain our responsibility as councilors, deliberate. And when I was asking questions, when Mike Signer was asking questions, we were berated by the community in the council chambers that night as we were trying to get to the bottom of the validity of this request and whether we could do it based on our policies. So I think it's going to be important that we follow rules, because then you're fair to everybody. And if you start breaking rules, then you forget who got what, when, where. And in a pluralistic democratic society, you're balancing everyone's needs. Everyone's got a different perspective on what's important. And you, as a city council, we're the representative body of 49,000 people. I believe 32,000 of them are registered voters. We are councilors for all of them.
Some background on that for the viewers. 15,000 was already allocated to that event. So it's not like money wasn't allocated to the event. Some more background, the rapper was an out-of-market rapper, not someone from Charlottesville. Some more background, the 30,000 was taxpayers' money, you know. Some more background on that, it was sprung up on you guys, and it wasn't something that anyone knew going into it. Some even more background is it's your job to ask questions of people wanting $30,000 of taxpayers' money. And if you're allocating $30,000 of taxpayers' money without asking questions, then you're not doing your job.
Yep.
So all you were doing was doing your job there.
Exactly.
So I've said that many times. I've caught heat for that myself on this program. It just comes down to the golden rule. And I feel like in today's social media iPhones are ubiquitous world, we're so quick to like draw a line in the sand and say, "You're either with me or you're against me." And at time, there was a time where we could agree to disagree in respectful fashion. Sure, we would be disappointed. But we did it with respect and agreed to disagree.
And I think I want to definitely acknowledge that when we are living in a system that has been the product of hundreds and hundreds, hundreds of years of certain power dynamics. And the white establishment has been in control for hundreds of years. Many of those rules were written by people way back when. They owned slaves. They actually were abusive to their workers in factories. Any number of ills of the people that were in control of local, state, federal governments for hundreds of years. But on that score, then if it's perceived or felt that the rules are unfair, you work hard to change those rules, like Martin Luther King did with the Voting Rights Act. But to then break rules recklessly and chaotically means you get just that, chaos. You don't get self-government. You don't get anything but the opportunity to get a demagogue to step in and take control by fiat. So that's the danger of a democracy. It's always possible to run into chaos, in which case societies, human societies, do not like chaos, and they will go to somebody who will just take care of them. But we are still a pluralistic democratic society, and we are representatives of the community, and we are balancing all the needs, and the rules are essential. I've been a major proponent of changing zoning. Zoning ordinances are rules, rules for development. It's not been, in my view, that our rules have been doing enough to create affordable housing, have not been doing enough to make us a much more sustainable, equitable community. And we also need to understand that there's a physical quality to our city of Charlottesville that we want to maintain and cherish, because quite frankly, it is the goose that's laying the golden egg. But I am not flagrantly breaking those rules as I work hard to change them. It's just the way you work in a free society, in a free society that has a lot of constraints because you're trying to balance so many conflicting needs. That's my opinion.
We're live on seven Facebook pages here on the I Love Seaville network. A lot of questions are coming in on each of these Facebook pages. If you could give the show a like and a share on any of the pages you're watching, that would mean a lot to me. If you have a question that's respectful and positive for Kathy or a perspective that you'd like to share, put it in the comment section. I will vet them myself. Not all will be relayed on air. Please do that. Let's thank some of the folks that are watching. Laura Foner, who's going to be the new owner at Duna's Restaurant, is watching. Dusty Lee Haney, Nick McCarthy, Nicole Scrow, the builder. Bellamy Brown is watching. Bellamy, I'll ask Counselor Galvin about you and your strategy to run as an independent. Tripp Stewart, the veterinarian, is watching. Christopher Eagle of Real Estate 3, Janice Kavanaugh, Erin King, Chris Henry, the developer behind Dairy Central, Dairy Market, is watching. Quentin Beckham of Keller Williams, a lot of folks watching. Jay Wyon, I see you over in Keswick. Neil has this question, and we've touched on it certainly. "You're an architect, and Kathy, as an architect, how do you feel the physical structure of council chambers, positively or negatively, is impacting the ability to conduct business?" It's a good question.
It's a very good question. And actually, right after, we had a major, major outburst of community anger towards the city council. It was the first council meeting after August 12, 2017. And that was the day that people stood on the dais, and we had to be ushered out into another room as the police were trying to figure out how to keep us safe. And that was one moment where it was clear to me that we were like fish in a barrel. There was, if I had had that as an exercise to take in the, to get my architectural registration, I would have flunked that exam if I had designed a room like that without adequate egress and without actually any ability for the public to feel that they are more on par with their elected leaders. The dais being so elevated, I think, is...
You guys are like on a pedestal.
Is very, very disconcerting.
Of course.
And at that point, also, there was another time when Jason Kessler came, and he had two of his assistants with him, and one of whom had an exposed gun on his hip. That was another time, especially in the state of Virginia, where we cannot ban guns from public meetings. That was also a very, very frightening moment for me. So the design of the room is critically important. We had, I had reached out to an architectural studio at UVA. They would have been willing to look at a redesign. But again, we needed to have money behind that request. And the good news is our current city manager, Terron Richardson, is actually doing a stem-to-stern facilities appraisal, looking at all of our physical plant, which is long overdue. We've got crowded facilities, places where people are working without windows, and it's not conducive to good productivity. So that, I'm going to make sure I put in his view to say, "Look, the council chambers itself needs to be redesigned, make it much more accommodating to the public." I have a feeling that would also help ease the tensions in the room if people didn't feel like we were so elevated. And then give us access to daylight, more egress, and we would have a much better working environment ourselves. So thank you. That's a very good question.
That's a good question from Neil. I'm an entrepreneur and a businessman, and I'm heading to a lot of businesses that we service in a B2B standpoint around Charlottesville. And I've seen conference rooms at these businesses that we service evolving. And previously, it was a long table with the president or the owner of the company at the head of the table, and then people then, almost by order, pecking order, sitting down the table. Now those tables are becoming circular.
Yes, yes.
And they're becoming circular to encourage communication, equality, approachability.
Yep.
So that kind of goes along with what you're saying. We have another really good question here. This is from Cassie Arden. She's on Creed Deeds's team.
Oh, yeah.
Creed Deeds is watching.
Yeah, I know Cassie very well. Hi, Cassie.
What did you, her team, his team's watching, excuse me. What did you learn on the campaign trail, Kathy?
What I learned on the campaign trail is that it is wicked hard to raise $95,000 in two months, which is essentially what I had to do. And I had a three-month campaign. I got into it late. And that was, again, coming from a city council background, the most I had ever raised was $17,000. So the fact that I had such a steep hill to climb because my competitor had, what, $150,000 from the get-go, that was daunting. And that made me a fervent believer in campaign finance reform, so that you can get more people in and in the mix.
You're basically saying Sonia Smith gave Sally Hudson $100,000. And how do you come back? How do you compete with that?
That was big. The other thing was, I think we're seeing this play out at the national level as well. And I started off as a PTO president. I saw the challenges in our schools. I was in the vanguard to get an elected school board. When no one was running for the school board, I felt guilty, so I ran for the school board. I get on the school board. My kids are in the system. I wanted to work and make the system good for them. I wind up wanting to make the system good for all of our children. And then I realized, hmm, I like this policy. I like the policy ideas. I like this policy work. And then because of my background in architecture and planning and urban design, I was a good candidate for city council, which typically the training ground for councilors is the planning commission. I didn't need that. I had the policy background on the school board. So the idea of my working my way up into the position of council was not ambition as it was, that's how you learn your job. I am an architect. I could not even sit for the exam without apprenticing. So I learned my craft by doing it step by step. And each way, each step of the way, I learned what the gaps were in authority between state government and local government, where the funding gaps were between school divisions and State Department of Education. I had that background. I had that knowledge. And then the opportunity arose that someone was going to be unopposed, and I felt duty-bound to give people a choice.
Sure. Competition's good for everyone.
And so that, I stepped in and I thought, okay, I'm qualified. I've learned the ropes. I have something to offer. There is a choice. What I also learned, and that's the lead-up to that question, was I had, I really did not quite understand just how much experience, expertise, and rootedness was overshadowed by the newness, the anger, and the anti-establishment tenor of our times. And I say that with an eye also to what we're seeing in the national campaigns. And you're seeing the tensions in the Democratic Party. What shade of progressive are you? How much are you going to be sliced and diced? And each one of the presidential candidates keeps saying, "Well, no, I'm going to be doing this for the environment now. Oh, I'm going to do this." And before you... And it's like, whoa, can anybody afford anything? And so that's what I also learned, was that there really, it didn't matter anymore that you were apprenticed in your craft, which goes against everything that I believe in as a professional. And I understand that now. And I'm also a problem solver and a pragmatist. I was looking for, I kept using the phrase, the beloved community of Martin Luther King. And people had, though, the appetite of, no, we want to tear it down and start new. And I looked at what David Toscano had built, and I wanted to build on that foundation. I didn't feel that it needed to be kind of torn up by the roots. And so that's what I learned, is just the overall tenor of our times is one of great churn. And I hope at some point we come back to the understanding that it's okay to be seasoned. It's okay to be a proven leader. It doesn't always mean that you're corrupted, which kind of, you know, you have a record, you have a history. People can take things out of context and twist it and spin it. And that's the oldest trick in the book.
For politics.
Yeah. But social media now accelerates that.
Well, and social media also is an opportunity for someone who's really good at social media or has a huge following to gain traction in a political standpoint and to build a campaign around that traction and that momentum and that following. You mentioned the Democratic Party just being a very different party, and it's changing so much. You have almost like shades of Democrats now. And what I mean by that, you have some that are, in some ways, almost conservatives. Then you have some, and some that are socialists. Then you have some that are the moderates. And it seems like for so long, everyone just said, "I'm running as a Democrat in Charlottesville," because that was the only way for you to win. Mayor Walker proved otherwise, and now Bellamy Brown, who's watching now, is trying to prove otherwise, running as an independent. Anyone who watches this program knows I'm a huge, huge fan of Bellamy, and I think Bellamy Brown would be an incredible addition to Charlottesville City Council and leading us for the next four years, and I mean that, Bellamy. Your thoughts of Mr. Brown running as an independent?
Number one, my hat goes off to anybody, anybody who is willing to run for elected office in this day and age.
Right.
It takes guts.
The thankless.
And you don't do this for the pay.
Right. $18K.
Yeah. Yeah. And, you know, delegates made 17, so I was gonna take a pay cut if I got that.
How crazy is that? That's so crazy. Why would the delegate make less?
I don't know. I don't know. Anyway, but anyway, thank you to, to all the candidates, and I'm talking about, you know, the, the ones that are on the Democratic slate. I think, I mean, Mr. Bellamy Brown is, he's, he's now got a precedent to follow. Mayor Walker created the precedent of a, of an independent winning. And I have heard him on this, on the campaign trail, his argument that local government, local elected officials and local politics shouldn't be partisan. I think there was a certain element of, of a truth to that, that I recall, because as a city school board member, we were all independents. We did not have to deal with partisan politics. And I do believe that what happened is that it fosters collegiality on that board once you are elected. Because in, in a pitched battle in a primary race with your fellow partisan, in this case, Democrat, and you're hearing people tearing each other apart about their record, and then, so you're these, you're fierce competitors, and then all of a sudden, you win the Democratic Party primary and you're a ticket, and you've gotta work together after being competitors for so long, there hasn't been that room for building collegiality. And so, I think there's something to ponder about this idea of not having the local politics be partisan-based. Because ultimately, you want a group of people that can work together on the dais or on the school board come January 1.
Do we have that now?
Um, I think it's, there are moments-
Has it ever been more cantankerous in your time on city council?
I will say that my, my first term on council, there, it wasn't as fraught, but then again, we didn't have these big issues thrust upon us at that time.
You weren't post A-12.
And it was, it was before the whole discussions about the Confederate statues in our downtown parks. It was before August 12, 2017. And, and we, we just have to all admit, I mean, this is, the landscape has changed. My hope is that two years after August 12, 2017, we are closer to being a cohesive community, working together for a common good. And I think that's been my philosophy from the beginning. And I'm an architect, so by temperament and training, I am all about getting all the facts, getting all the stakeholders together, finding out what the right design to the problem is, and then doing it, solving that problem. If, if your background has been as an activist, where government was what you always kind of was challenging, or you were always challenging the developers, or you always had some group or entity that was the focus of your anger and your indignation, suddenly, when you're on that dais, you now are seeing a bigger picture. You're seeing how all these stakeholders actually are working in an ecosystem together. And it's really important to be able to then build some bridges. So, I think it's, I think it, it is important to come to elected office with the whole idea of that you are representing the entire community.
In totality.
And that it, it is better to, to build bridges than to tear them down.
Should someone who has a background as a role as an activist be on city council?
That's not what I'm saying. I, I'm saying that it is, I would imagine it to be quite a gear shift. Because now you're the establishment. You are-
You're the antithesis of what an activist is.
And, and so, then you, that's-
Then that becomes-
The challenge.
That becomes hypocrisy.
Well, it, it's, we all are put in situations that really stretch us and make us change. And, and I think it does mean that if you're gonna get anything done that was part of your aggressive, progressive agenda, and my, my methodology was, I have a very progressive agenda, but I, like, just this morning, I met with people from the Food Justice Network. I met with a member of the Virginia Education Association. I'm gonna be meeting with the United Way this afternoon, all of which to make sure that I am gonna be working with Wes Bellamy on a really good, complete package of legislative requests for the General Assembly this year, that includes education, that includes food justice, that includes early childhood development and care. That, all of these different groups are, have different focus points and priorities and agendas that I pay attention to. And so, all I'm saying is that it, it's better to not make enemies along the way, but you can't help but do that. I mean, you make a decision, you're gonna make 50% of the people unhappy. That's just part of the being, taking the heat of being a, a decision-maker in an elected office. But I, I think the idea of compromise is, is sometimes called a dirty word, and yet our system of government is built on it. It's, I always come up with an idea, but I have to work with two other counselors to get it passed.
It's so funny that compromise is a dirty word, only in politics. Because compromise in a marriage, I do it all the time. Compromise in running my businesses, I do it all the time. So many times in a business deal, both parties walk away from the negotiating table feeling frustrated. But when both parties walk away from the negotiating table feeling frustrated, the deal was probably done in the right way. As opposed to one part, party leaving, yes, and the other party leaving bummed. And I just-
Otherwise, you're in stasis, right? You don't move.
Right.
And if, if you're always making the, the perfect the enemy of the good, then we don't move the needle anywhere.
Perfect. We say this all the time here, perfection is the enemy of productivity and profitability.
So, you know, just for an example, I'm, I'm trying to detach myself from some of the, the, kind of the churn that's going around, this whole idea of a form-based code south of the downtown mall, in an area that's focused around the X property. And it, and it's using height bonuses to get onsite affordable housing built. We got the numbers crunched. We have an idea of how much that is gonna generate. It also is then paired with good standards for how you place the building on, on the site, more blocks so that you get safer, walkable streets. And we're talking about using, what they call it, a synthetic tax increment finance district, a fancy way of just saying, let's take this area and earmark some of the revenue from the, from the development and churn it back into affordable housing. So, it's this kind of a, a solution that works with the private sector development community, that respects private property, but uses incentives, but gets affordable housing, a, a public good built onsite. Right now, we throw height away. And then harnesses the value of development, that incremental change of before and after improvements on property, and then clearly ties it to another community good, affordable housing. To me, that's a solution that is working with, with many stakeholders. And, and if some groups say, oh, no, it's not, it's not 100% affordable housing, or other groups say, oh, it's, it's too much growth, even though all it's doing is taking the existing entitlements there and repackaging them, you begin to see people don't want, people don't want anything to change, even though they keep demanding change. And that is, that, that's been my work for the last eight years, is trying to get people to find a common understanding. And, and some things, some, some battles will not be won, but, but others have. And I think that's what I can go to bed and with a good conscience, knowing that I, I did my tour of duty. I'd worked my tail off. I, I tried to keep myself honest and, and keep my integrity intact, and I did my homework. So, you know, that, that's, and after that, the legacy will be the, the things that you see already. I mean, I know I was very responsible for getting the water supply we have. I was very responsible for getting the, that stinking pump station out of the Woolen Mills. I was very responsible-
Og Waller, right? Yeah.
Very responsible for getting the odor mitigation plan active and working so that now Belmont Carlton and Woolen Mills is a much better humane place to live.
Yeah.
I know when the, we get the more street trees and wider sidewalks on West Main Street, it's gonna be a more equitable, more sustainable, more beautiful place. And-
I can't wait.
When we finally get the bridge built. And I think, and I, every day, every week, someone stops me who been, has benefited from the growing opportunity program. And that's, so, you know-
You got a message on that. Kyle Ervin, who's the marketing director at Charlottesville More Transit, we had an amazing GoDriver graduation-
Oh, good.
-this past Friday at CAT. These programs truly change lives and bring people into a new journey in their life that they never thought possible, creating jobs. He salutes you.
Well, I salute him.
Don Gather's watching now. Nathan Evans, Tom Linkus watching right now. JoJo Robertson and Mary Carrier putting a lot of questions on the feed. Ladies, I'm not gonna ask these, and I, I'll take the heat for that. I will ask, Jeffrey Fogel tagged on the feed now, I will ask a paraphrased version of this question, and I think this one's a fair question. How do you feel, I guess, your relationship or how you're viewed by the African-American community in Charlottesville?
My feeling and my relationships with the African-Americans that I've worked with and I know, and that's from Friendship Court to the churches and Mount Zion, they know that I am a reliable, effective counselor. And I'm very proud of that relationship. And I know when Friendship Court comes up out of the ground, the resident-driven plan, and I was there helping get whatever funding they needed, whatever resources they needed, and they crafted exactly what they wanted, that's gonna be a point of pride for the Friendship Court community.
And part of your legacy.
And it's within what they call the strategic investment area, which has been an area that has been, for whatever reason, portrayed as the displacement plan, but the reality is it's the only part of the city where the city has committed in its comp plan to preserve all 340 units of affordable housing there. And when we crunch the numbers on that form-based code with that height bonus, and we have a build-out over the next 20 years, there's currently 25% affordable housing now, there will be 25% affordable housing then. That is the definition of non-displacement. We have kept the percentage of affordable housing in that community because it was intentional. It's a blending of having PHA, a nonprofit housing provider, having CRHA, a housing agency, housing authority, having private sector build onsite affordable housing, and then using the money from the, the redevelopment to turn back into housing vouchers to provide assistance for people at 30% AMI and below.
Area median income.
That is my idea of a solution that's win-win. And the people that work with me, black, white, Asian, they know I'm a person they can trust. And that's all I can say, and I, and it's a high honor for me to have, have been able to be part of this community and to be a part of all of our communities in this city.
I think that's a good answer. How do you, you're an architect, you have vision that other people don't have because your schooling and your education and your work experience have helped develop and create this vision. How do you see Friendship Court and the strategic investment area, which is south of downtown, how do you see that looking in 20 years?
I see it as a place where the most persistent, pernicious legacy of Jim Crow finally might disappear. And that's a legacy of racial and class segregation. This will be a community that has maintained its vitality as, as a place of, of African-American culture and, and, and hope. And, and at the same time, because of a concerted effort on the part of the city and nonprofits, nonprofit housing providers and the residents themselves, they are gonna be rebuilding and building new housing that's affordable and that's also at different tiers of affordability. So, as they improve and grow and earn income, they're not kicked out. There will be an early childhood development center, a big issue for me. When you, there was just an article in the Progress today about how working moms in particular are just destroyed by the cost of childcare. This is, this is a model to put localized childcare centers. It's a model that's done in Austin, Texas, in the vicinity of your affordable housing. And there'll also be market-rate housing, and there'll be offices, and there'll be businesses. I'm hearing that there's, there might be a movement afoot to have a food co-op in the area south of the downtown mall, so you have access to healthy food, which is a huge issue for me.
Huge issue.
It's, it's, as a kid that grew up in poverty, living on potatoes, I can't eat potatoes to this day, but I understand how nutrition matters, and it matters to your longevity. And so, this is really, that's what we're gonna see. And all government can do, in my mind, is set the table and, and, and give people that have been out of power tools to work with and chart their own destiny. And at the same time, let us look at a vision where we are seeing people of color, white people, people of economic means, people not, living on the same block, living in the same neighborhood. And, and maybe, just maybe, we'll have a better ability to really empathize and understand each other. I don't know whether this city will ever be home to a sizable percentage of Republicans, but that would be also an interesting phenomenon. But I think right now, what we're talking about is, we're talking about our democracy, we're talking about our, our, what it means to be a self-governing people. And everybody's gonna have a chance at that table. That's what equity means. And equity means you, you, you give the, the resources to get people on that level playing field. And I believe it starts with neighborhoods. So, making neighborhoods of opportunity will, will, will translate into all other areas of opportunity.
Young dad here, as you know. My son's 17 months old.
Oh, yes.
Charlottesville, I want to be our home for certainly the rest of my wife and I's life. And I want Charlottesville for my son, should he choose to, you know, stay here, to be a community that's diverse and eclectic and well-rounded in its different perspectives. Because I think once we embrace diversity and folks that have different mindsets and look differently than us, and we, we start opening up our minds. And once our minds are open, and I hope my son's minds, mind opens as he grows, then we start to become better versions of ourself. And that's, I think, all we want as parents, is for our kids to be better versions of us-
Mm-hmm.
And the best version of them possible. Where I'm going with this is, as a young dad, I do get concerned that Charlottesville is gonna turn into this extremely wealthy epicenter. Almost, you know, I don't wanna say, 'cause it's cliche, almost San Francisco-esque, but you get my drift. We have such limited space in 10.27 square miles. We have the university producing brilliant people, and a lot of those brilliant people are staying here, starting jobs, starting companies. We have Joffrey Woodruff, who's, who's certainly very good at what he does, building the center of developing entrepreneurs in the old Ice Park location, giving $150 million donation to UVA to start a data science school. Obviously, we see the writing on the wall that this data science school in some ways could be potentially a farm system, if you may-
Mm-hmm.
-for his portfolio of companies and what he does with his hedge fund. Should we be concerned that Charlottesville is going to outprice or, or price people out of the market, so it turns into just this bastion of the wealthy?
Absolutely. That's why we need to get, get on board and fill our quiver of arrows to, to knock this problem down. And that's, so if you can just imagine, right, what I just talked about with this, this idea of a zoning tool combined with a budgetary tool, combined with a vision from the community, so, we, that is creating a scenario where we're having- So that is creating a scenario where we're having low-wealth housing as well as workforce housing, as well as market housing in this neighborhood because it was intentional. And I'm, I am not an anti-growth person, I'm, I am someone who wants to be intentional about growth.
Your strategic growth.
And so, the idea of just building nine-story buildings everywhere and thinking that the market's going to solve the problem, no, it doesn't. It only makes it that much more available. And that's kind of the zoning we have now in this part of the city that we're talking about, the south of the downtown mall. There's a nine-story building going up on Garrett Street, not one unit of affordable housing in it. And it's called mixed use because they have more structured parking than they need. And the rest of it's an office. So, we need office space, yes, but not to the exclusion of people's living units. And we need to create buildings that have a presence on the street that's not a slap in the face to the neighbors. Which is, you know, a blank wall of three stories of parking garage across Friendship Court, which is going to be a gorgeous place with lots of windows and doors and active street life, is a slap in the face. And so that's why it's important that we respect the physical form of what we love in the city. You get the same concerns in Tenth and Page in Fife Field as you do in Belmont. People want the physical form. So, but if you can imagine, there's a lot of underdeveloped areas of the city. If we could, if we could get to the point where we really incent redevelopment, but do it in a way that builds in transition zones between high intensity and low intensity, get in this height bonus requirement so that there's onsite affordable housing built, make sure we get moving on this land bank idea so that the city can have a tool to start acquiring properties that can then give it to a, sell it for a sign to a nonprofit, that can then build en masse more affordable housing, then we're getting ahead of the game. That's why Carlton Views is so important.
That's why that project on Nassau Street is important, too, with the Thomas Jefferson Community Land Trust.
Yes. And that's done in a way that I think is extremely sympathetic to the physical form. So, again, it, we need the right tools, we need to be smart about the tools, and we need to be strategic. That's why moving forward with updating our comprehensive plan right now is going to be so important. We're going to get some outside assistance to help us do that. And it's going to be integrated with an affordable housing strategy, and then move right into changing our zoning citywide. So that we're not spending all of our time on the DAS and on the Planning Commission wrestling with rezonings and special use permits that are not, that are not clear to the public, confusing, seem to be contrary to what our zoning says, seem to be contrary to what our community vision says, i.e. the comprehensive plan. So let's do it right, and then let's be transparent, let's be efficient. Let's not take two years to process a development project. That kills affordability, and it kills our bottom line as a city. So we do need to grow and redevelop. Let's do it smart, let's do it equitably, and let's do it sustainably. And that way, we'll be ahead of the game. But we have to do it now. We can't, we can't keep making the perfect the enemy of the good. You get a tool, try it out, use it, move on. Let's get going. That's my message.
I like it. Kevin Higgins has a good question for you. Charlottesville was once ranked the best place to live in the country. Do you feel that is still true today?
It will be true.
Okay.
And it's going to have a different definition of best. In the past, best meant, oh, it was a lot of fun for visiting, and it was, it was all about wine tasting and brew pubs and great entertainment, entertainment venues. And, you know, we've always had good schools, and we, our crime is down. But the best part didn't include the chronic multigenerational poverty that persisted in many pockets of our neighborhoods in our city. So it was, again, it was an insult to people that were struggling day in and day out. Often people of color, legacy of racism, legacy of Jim Crow, massive resistance, urban renewal, to always have Charlottesville be called best when their lives did not reflect the best that Charlottesville had to offer. So moving forward, best to me is going to be like those, that image of our low-wealth African and American communities partaking in the wealth creation of the city on par with everyone else. And that's the vision of New Hill Development Corporation. That's another group that I worked with Wes Bellamy on. And they're moving forward with their own vision plan with the community, and it's-
We had Mrs. Harrell on the show, and I was totally impressed. And I like how they pivoted their model, and how they've pivoted their model some $500,000 in taxpayer money. So I've been following it closely because that's a lot of money. And they've pivoted the model to more of an education-based model, where it's, let's empower the most impoverished citizens in our community with the education to not only save money, but to grow generational wealth.
Touche.
And it's, it was, it was great. And I really thought that Mrs. Harrell had a tremendous vision for what she wanted with her organization. And I think it takes folks like you and the counselors to take a chance. You took a chance.
Mm-hmm.
You took a chance with $500,000 of taxpayer money. And then it takes individuals like Mrs. Harrell to realize that a chance was taken, and then that they have to live up to that, to that opportunity for the city.
Well, and I look at it this way. We give tax breaks to startups in the innovation sector. You add that up over the course of several years, it's more than a half million dollars going to groups of people that have a pretty darn good chance of succeeding. This was, in my mind, startup money for a really excellent idea, and with a person and a team with vision. And it's a vision that's inclusive, it's a vision that's about justice, and it brings up the whole idea of the beloved community that Martin Luther King talked about so well, that a place where all of the world's children can partake in the bounty, the richness of the world's assets. And that we resolve our differences through nonviolence. That's, that, that will, if that's our legacy moving forward, then we have definitely proven the white supremacists, the white nationalists wrong, who invaded our community on August 12, 2017. And we have, we have put the shoulder to the plow and put our money where our mouth is. So I think, I think, but we're still, we're still hashing these differences out, and history is being made.
I think you're 100% right. Kevin Higgins said, such a well-thought-out answer. Counselor Galvin heartfelt. I appreciate this answer and this interview in whole. A lot of people watching right now. Will Vanderlin, thank you for joining us on the program. One of your colleagues is watching right now, folks over at City Hall watching right now. We'll wind, we'll wrap up, because I know your time is your most precious commodity, and you've filled an hour very easily and effortlessly. How about Charlottesville from a healthcare premium standpoint? It's killing so many of us.
Oh, well, that was another thing that I learned quite a bit in the delegate race. And so that, because typically that wouldn't be something a Charlottesville city counselor would work on.
That's a Richmond.
And it's a Richmond issue.
Yeah.
It is, it is a situation where hopefully we do get the General Assembly to tip over into the Democratic Party. In this, in this time, I think we are seeing leadership in the Democratic Party to solve big problems like healthcare and premiums. I do think at this point, adding the competition into the space has demonstrated the ability to bring the premiums down somewhat. We need to make sure that we actually do something about the prescription drug prices going up. And I did research on other states that have transparency laws that just simply from advertising, promoting the costs of drugs gives people choice. But I said on the campaign trail, I think we need to be moving towards introducing a public option in the exchange. Shore up the Affordable Care Act, so that it is the program that it was intended to be. I know that's going to be a heavy lift. I, it is, in my mind, the logical step to take. And when we do that, we're going to let, we're going to force the system to become more competitive. And I think that's the way to start bringing that down. But otherwise, I think we need to also be more robustly funding our insurance benefits program, which did provide assistance to people to get the premiums down that were very low wealth. But as you can see, the logic to that doesn't make sense to me because if you don't get the escalating costs down, it's a bottomless pit of public monies. You've got to stop the inflation of healthcare costs. And so far, the way I've seen that done is through competition and making it more open and transparent.
Competition is good for any industry, and it's certainly needed in healthcare. Young family with a little boy, over 900 a month for our family and premiums, and we're pretty much paying for catastrophic.
And it's also, it cuts into the ability of employers to pay good wages. It's, to me, it's the big problem that we have with childcare, that if we really want a fair, healthy, robust economy that benefits all people, getting a handle on healthcare, getting a handle on childcare expenses. I'm a proponent of public transportation. We need to be more robustly investing in transit so that people don't have to totally depend on their cars. I'm thrilled about the fact that John's got a commuter line now from Crozay to DC.
Wonderful.
I mean, to Charlottesville. And so, those are the ways to get and support our community and our citizens, and in the same time, it will help employers because then their employees are going to be more confident and stable, and therefore more effective because their children are taken care of. They've got the health covered, they don't have to worry about a car breaking down. It's, it's common sense. And so that's, I mean, actually, I had lunch with Elizabeth Cromwell.
Chamber CEO.
I'm going to be, it's the beginning of a long relationship and see where we can have more partnerships with the business community. And-
That's smart.
It's really important that we engage on that level, just as we, it's really important that we engage continually with our members who live in public housing and assisted housing, with our churches, the faith community. You know, and you saw what happened with the Hinton Methodist Church stepping to the plate to build affordable housing on their grounds.
That was awesome.
That's living the mission.
Two more questions, and then maybe we can get you to sing a tune.
Okay, well, let's see.
She's got a fabulous voice, guys. If we do get Counselor Galvin to sing a tune here on the show, it'll be our treat. Kevin says, UVA raises fees 10% every year for healthcare. If the insurance payers have to pay more, the premiums increase. And he's obviously tied to UVA. James Watson wants to know, and I'm going to take your question a little further, James. Wants to know about affordable housing in the county, and should the city work closer with the county board supervisors to find an affordable housing solution? Maybe take it to a more macro level? How about like, city and the county in general, that relationship and that dynamic?
And I think it's been interesting how the county and the city have been kind of like passing a basketball back and forth. The county started its pathway on good planning and zoning 20-plus years ago, and I know because I was a chair of the Growth Management Committee. And then we took the lead on really understanding our affordable housing. So now, they're, they're, they're using, they're taking the cues from us about affordable housing. We need to take the cues from them about how to do good planning and zoning. Because the Southwood Mobile Home Park is being built in accordance with strategies and urban design-
Just pass, just pass.
But it's good urban form. It's not at all compromising affordability to create a beautiful, healthy place. And I, you know, the downtown Crozay is finally-
The lumberyard project.
Moving forward, but I was the lead senior designer on the master plan for Crozay in 2002. So I have to keep telling myself, it takes 20 years to curate these things. And maybe it's, we could learn, we, not maybe, we will learn from each other if, hey, look at this tool that the county's using to create good places that include affordable housing. That's what we're trying to do south of the downtown mall with this form-based code. Hey, city of Charlottesville, great data that you did on getting affordable housing information. That's why that gave rise to a regional affordable housing strategy. So let's get together, let's do our zoning together, and let's do our development planning together, and let's do our affordable housing plans together. We are one community.
Please give it, the show a like and a share on any of the seven Facebook pages you're watching now. I think Kathy crushed it today, and you-
You always say that, so I don't know.
You did crush it. And I don't always say it, I say it when it applies. 70 minutes flew by. Can I get, can we get you to sing? Is it, putting you on the spot here. You do have-
Okay.
You have a great voice.
Well, let's see. I got to see if I can remember words.
What was the one you sung last time for us?
That was Singing Bird. I, I'll see if I can remember another one. And this is a song, oh, yeah, okay. I like it because it's Patty's Green Shamrock Shore. My eldest son is named Patrick, and the date, May 23rd, is in it, and that's the day he was born.
Okay. May 23rd?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, this goes out to Patrick.
Patrick.
I could screw it up with the, if I don't get the right chord in the beginning. From Dairy Cape, we sailed away on the 23rd of May. We were taken on board by a pleasant crew, all bound for America. Fresh water we did take on board, 5,000 gallons or more, in case we ran short going to New York away from the Shamrock Shore. So fare thee well, sweet Willie dear, and likewise to Dairy Town. And it's twice farewell to me comrades all, who do dwell on that sainted ground. If ever fortune should favor me, and I'd have money in store, I'll go back and I'll wed the sweet laddie I left on Patty's Green Shamrock Shore.
Fantastic. To Patrick Galvin.
Yes. Patrick Galvin Costanzo.
May 23rd. You crushed it.
Well, thank you. That might be the last song people hear me sing.
I hope not.
Well-
When do you do most of your singing? In the shower?
Well, who knows? Maybe that'll be the next thing I do, right? Go back to doing session music.
Why don't we close on that? What's in store? What do you got on the, what are you seeing on the horizon?
Well, I mean, I'm looking, I'm looking at possibilities, not just in Charlottesville, but Richmond, DC. There's always architecture and urban design and planning, but there's also now the policy background I've got, makes me really eager to be participating in those discussions at different levels, as a consultant, or just even working with local governments. So that's that, but I'm also looking forward to more music. More time with my husband and my dog, and my sons. And more traveling. So it's been a journey, and thank you, Charlottesville. Thank you, Alma County. And thank you.
Sure. Our pleasure. Thank you. You made us great today. Her third time on the show, and I think the third time was the best time. Thank you.
Thank you.
For coming on the show. Guys, we close the show the same way every time. First, we let you know where the show's going to be archived on. We're going to archive the show on iloveSeville.com today by close of business. We will turn it into a podcast on iTunes today by close of business. We will take today's show and syndicate it across the I Love Seville network for 30 days after today. That means this show will be published on 17 Facebook pages, 17 Twitter accounts, a daily e-newsletter that goes out to 108,000-plus inboxes, the third-largest Instagram community in central Virginia, and then, of course, on iloveSeville.com and on iTunes. We try to spotlight the best of Charlottesville, Virginia. I think Kathy- I think Kathy embodies those qualities. We close the show the same way every time, by asking everyone to please think the golden rule, try to embrace the golden rule. I don't make this part of the show about religion. I do make this part of the show about treating other people, your peers, your fellow humans, how you want to be treated yourself. It's the golden rule. It's a very straightforward concept, but it's a concept that I think is missing from a lot of the world. I think Charlottesville needs the golden rule more than ever. I think the Commonwealth and the country need the golden rule more than ever. So please try to embody it. My name is Jerry Miller. It's the I Love Seville Show. We love connecting with you guys through this platform. Enjoy your afternoon.
That was lovely. Well, again, thank you.
Thank you. We've got one more thing to do. We've got to take a hero picture for the package.
Oh, that's right.